And we have a couple of, as you can see, presentations. Looks like the school district's a little bit more high-tech than the water department, but that's okay.
Oh, I got these.
So I want to get through as much of the agenda as possible. I want to go through the whole agenda.
Quick, quick. You want to pass it?
First of all, I just want to remind everybody that your, the annual financial disclosure forms were due today, are due today. So there are six members who have not filed yet. I'm not going to say who. I don't know who, but... So you should get those... If you can't get them in today, get them in tomorrow. But try to get those, those need to get in. Today is the due date. Yes. Your financial disclosure statement, that's due on May 15. So if that's due today, if you didn't get it in, get it in tomorrow. Yeah. Kishana sent out the forms. If you have any questions, if you don't have the form, let Kishana know. Folks, if you, Kishana had sent out the form, she sent them out twice. So if you don't have them, let her know. All right. Can I, I want to go through the agenda. We have two presentations on the agenda. I want to touch a little bit on Youth and Government Night, which is on Monday. There are a couple of issues out of leadership that Kelly and I want to touch on. And then we have presentations from Capitalized Albany on the CFA process and the school district on the budget. And so those are the things we need to cover tonight. So if we go to the agenda, I'm going to jump forward to pick up on the discussion from Caucus West. Whoops. On the Beaver Creek Project. Joe is here, and we had that discussion last week. Since then, the Home Rule Bill has been introduced. That's the bill that needed to be introduced, that we're going to be doing, we need to do the Home Rule Resolution on. And Joe, if you want to come up, and just quickly, just to make sure I'm correct, all we're talking about, we already approved the project, the Home Rule Bill, last year in 2018. It was signed into law. There is, since then, there's been a modification or an additional part of the park that they need to go through that relates to sewer drainage from down to this, to Morton. Okay? So it's just, it's a modification, a small modification, to what we've already approved. And I think we're all familiar with the Beaver Creek Project and what we're supposed to be doing with it, so I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe just to review what we're doing and the Home Rule and what we need, what is details.
Well, there were two things that came up last week. One, I think, was the Home Rule and the additional alienation of Parkland that we were asking about. And that was with the concept of multiple community meetings, which we saw that the folks had primarily around Lincoln Park of trucking solids out from the facility to screenings and things that were removed from, from the building. So we were able to look at all the other infrastructure that we had in the ground, and there was an underutilized storm sewer on Third Avenue that has a lot of capacity. And as a result of some additional work that we did subsequent to those community meetings, we were able to come up with an option for the Green River Park building itself, having much less in size, and it also enabled the old solids to be screened underground. And we could divert them to the Albany County South Treatment Plant at the port for disposal. So that way, we would not have any truck traffic coming up into Lincoln Park at the facility to take the screenings that were being held on Walwart, the neighbors inside the building, and then move them by traffic to the landfill. So the benefits of that is that we obviously have no truck traffic for solids, and it removes the potential that we had for potential orders and water control in the building. We'll start water control, but there's no solids being stored outside the facility, continually shipped underground and directly to the water push control plant at the port. The impact of that is that there's some additional costs for us. One is that we have to do a ton of underground, saw underground from that facility, kind of skirt along the side of the park, along Morton Avenue, then cross over to Third Avenue. That's all going to be micro-tunnled underground. And the other additional cost that they made in the judgment that the county's water purification plan, that would enable them to actually collect more screening, so the impact on the river is dramatically improved, and we believe we're doing that.
This is the Home Rule.
So that's the basis for the additional alienation project. I think you gave your drawings and maps last week.
Is it the Home Rule?
Yeah, the county had, there were multiple, multiple parties to the consent order, the
four communities, which are Albany, Ford Rensselaer, the host Green Island Water, et cetera, and Rensselaer, and then the two county facilities. The county plants were required to do some dissection projects at their facilities. They've already been completed. So, and as part of the Albany County Sewer District, the city already contributes about 54% of all the capital costs. But we're actually paying for the long-term control plan, the shared cost of that, to do the additional screening set plan. So we're at an agreement with the county. The board has already approved what we're doing, and in fact, we're working at the agreement to fund and put the screenings into facilities up at the county as we speak.
Just a reminder, a Park Alienation Bill. Park Alienation Bill, if it's passed by the legislature, is only an authorization to us. We then have to come back and actually approve that, approve the alienation, and we also have to do something, any land that's alienated, we have to do something to compensate for that loss, either by additional land or financial contribution, something along those lines. So this all does come back to us. It's just an authorization right now. I think Alfred on it, Tom?
I just want to clarify, so this is something neighbors want, one, concerning, and two, all the solid waste can come into normal sewer systems, and that's going to be filtered through a normal filter.
Yeah, I would probably just clarify, I don't think any neighbors want any of this talked about at all, but so I think what we tried to do is come up with as happy a meeting as we could to mitigate the impact on the community with any of the above-ground issues like traffic, orders, that type of issue. So we think the project adoption that we've got right now satisfies the majority of folks that get an agreement, and it seems like it has calmed the folks down a little bit. And this, again, it's a consent order. We are required to start construction in 2020 and be completed by December '22, 2022.
Tom, and then Derek.
So when you say you're going to put solids into the pipe, you said third street fence.
We're going to keep solids in the pipe. We're not taking solids out of the pipe. The solids are already in the...
Well, what type of solids are they?
Screens, it's the stuff that goes in the catch phases.
So they're totally stormwater screenings?
No. So right now, what goes into the facility is combined sewage or sanitary, and any degree that gets into the storm sewer system.
Okay, so we're going to convert the storm sewer into a municipal use storm?
There are two, there are two, there's an existing sanitary sewer on Third Avenue, and it's a storm sewer that I mentioned. So we're going to have to take that storm sewer, and we're going to take any of the things that are in the storm sewer, which right now will go out to the regulator, to the relevant state, and it's going to appear to be going to the County Treatment Plant. Another storm into the river, going over to the County Treatment Plant.
Okay. But again, we're, yes, I'm asking, are we putting, we're putting sanitary combined sewage in, that has been historically a storm sewer that's something we utilized, and we had demonstrated and collected information on Third Avenue, which I can show you some data. It's a 30-inch storm sewer that when it rains only hits about six liters per gallon. Now, last week, well, one of the things that I'm really concerned about, and I appreciate, I understand the consent order, we've got to eat something, and we've got to move. What my concern is that we're fixing up the end of the system, how long will it be before that work moves back up to the upper waters?
Actually, I have some things I will show you.
Sure.
I'd be happy to show that I have multiple...
Because we've got problems in Melrose, and I'm not going to...
No, no, Justin.
Derek?
So, permission, I spoke with Dawn Martin today, and I explained my discomfort with the fact that we had a meeting on Craig's Story, and then the response leading to the Craig's Story meeting was at a different spot. I don't want to be left with having to respond to the concerns that were brought up, and we didn't have a meeting at Craig's Story, so she agreed that that could be problematic.
With the happening of the meeting, do you think? We still have to go through the project, will be happening with, with the decision with Craig's Story, and that may rely on time, everybody?
Yes, because from what I, I just wanted to find out how it was, that meeting at Howe Library was attended, and I believe the only person that was on Third Avenue, that Third Avenue meeting was Travis, the fire, and it was more than...
Yeah, he was like seven years in.
Yes, yes, so, you know, I just found out this information maybe two hours before listening, and from Joanne, I was unable to get the contact, but it's something that...
Yeah, from the feedback, we actually, I don't know, we did, we shared all the information that we had, and we put the mailing list that we had from the Craig's Story meeting, and any others, we'd be happy to go out and close it.
So I will try to get that shown in the works. That's one of the thoughts.
Were there any, excuse me, any other questions on this one?
I thought you, I showed, I thought, I don't know, I just wasn't sure if there's more questions, specifically on...
Specifically on this building, this project. We're going to want to move this on Monday. It's going to be an MC, and I think that the resolution has gone around.
I'm sorry, I just, it says an MC.
It's an MC for Monday. This would be, you know, I think this is going to be...
Thirty-two fifty-two.
Thirty-two. Thirty-two fifty-two nineteen R. We have another MC for thirty-one, which we'll get to. So Joe, if you can quickly...
I have a talk with, it's quickly...
Because we do want to get on, we have to get on with the rest of the agenda. Go ahead.
So I'm going to walk through this, I'm not a power company, I want to walk through this little bit, but we could just take one of these, yeah, so I've got two different boards I'm going to go through, and at the end of the, at the end of the program, I'm going to, we, we, I think it's important to get a handle, this is the five-year capital plan that we've got, and talks a little bit about some background on all the things that we figure out, a hundred and six million dollar capital plan we have in the next five years. So you can see that essentially, there's still slides from, maybe we start with this one, a couple of things you can refer to later. This is the one I want to talk to them on earlier.
Get this one here, folks. This is one you want to look at.
All right. So this is a distillation of presentations that we've got at U N D's Road Recubed Center, and it's probably, it's early Albany in 1790, and it shows the four main streams that flow through, that part of the, so one of them, and we have to keep that in mind, because those essentially were piped and became the combined sewers that we have today. That's why I'm calling this space to the past, or sewers of the present. And you look at the next slide, this is something to talk about, Starbros in the City Attorney Corps in 1854, and it talks about how these sewers, how these sewers were led to, these people led to the three, and I've got this picture, it's a different size of the sewers in different areas. And then the head soul part, looking at this slide, this is Washington Park, and to be real quick, this is a presentation, don't send no difference, we watch the fall, and the Albany Institute, to the Washington Park Service, and the picture right after that shows the park in about 1868, 1867, and it took the deep creek, flowing through, was down Washington Park, and that was then, that became Washington Park, and that's the next slide. So you see, then as the city developed, it became more populated, it grew, they had really quite ways to contain these open streams to, for frankly, open sewers. So everything, if you look at a map of the city now, you won't, you won't see any blue lines on a USGS map, because all those streams are now piped and are underground at the Bull, at the Bull. And yes, so this is the thing, 1884, shows the map of the city, this is all part of the city under the trans, but all those red areas are areas that are piped parts of the Beaver Creek, and those little areas that are shaded are areas that were flooding. So this is areas that go back to early 1884, where there's some evidence that there was flooding in these combined sewers as the city grew. And that's actually what we have, is July 1946, and that again shows elements of Beaver Creek, if you hear it in the circle, very southern, severe flooding. And not only were they subject to flooding, but they're subject to backups and basements. One of the interesting, and the next picture shows that as well, one of the interesting elements of combined sewers, and it's in the city code, it can just shows, you know, I think people, you build a house, and you add your basement, the way the code is normally written is that you are not, you are not really permitted or allowed to put plumbing in your basement if the elevation of that plumbing is lower than the manhole that's downstream, the manhole cover is downstream. So, I don't know, it's kind of hard to picture, so my first floor is up here, and the downstream manhole cover is at this elevation, if my basement's here, I shouldn't be connected to it, I can only connect plumbing that's higher than that altitude elevation. So a lot of folks, as they built their homes, and the basements are there, they put plumbing into downstairs, and they piped it into the sewer and opened the trap up. That has generally been what we find in some of the older house, depending on the base that's called a back rock. In newer homes, you wouldn't be allowed to do that. So what's, one of the remedies for that, if you had downstream, downstream plumbing in your basement, you usually want to flush out oil if you do something that's under pressure, so it's not connected by gravity to your system. So the next one is just, I'm going to talk about this one a little bit more in length. That's just a map of the sewer sheds, and I've got that board to show you. This is talking some of the mitigation strategies that we looked at over the past few years, and really go to trying to, the stormwater detention for new private development, I think you discussed this, read that for a second, the runoff from a new development cannot exceed the runoff from a broadband site that would be generated from a canyon storm, I feel it's happening now. That's pretty, that's pretty good development standards to tension. So if you look at the work that has done down at like Park Saff, Albany Med, it's a lot of this, any of the new buildings, whatever's done on Allen Street, the amount of stormwater that was holding back from there is less than what was going off that site and undeveloped. So it's a pretty rigorous standard for developers to meet. The other thing we're looking at is green infrastructure. The bullets that are a little bit after that is the diversion of stormwater to the larger water bodies. We did a yard park, we put a five-foot dam in a sewer, a storm sewer, dedicated sewer down Elbron, that collected that old water from nine acres of runoff and diverted into Washington Park Lake. And you've probably read about some of the technology that we've used, that we actually go with that lake in anticipation of a storm, so when it rains, the lake will go up without overflowing into the Beaver Creek trunk sewer. So we've done that at Washington Park Lake in Buckingham Pond, we actually, over the years, have the department working with the cities converted, separated the sewers, put storm sewers in, and had the stormwater go directly to Buckingham Pond. There it's pumped out to the Crunk Hill, totally removing it from the Beaver Creek system. And so some other projects that we've done, probably in the past, well, I'd say about seven years or something, we've detained about 10 million downs of today, that's per storm. So every time a storm, we give it all 10 million downs out of the system. And there's a, the last bullet refers to a project, we actually put a R O P out, you know, a water contract, probably got in the board meeting Friday, talked about the board meeting in June, to a consultant to work with, that we're going to do some stormwater modeling and simulation of the entire Beaver Creek system from Myrtle Avenue up past Western Avenue up into Melrose. There's been some detention ponds that were, not detention, there's been some recharge projects that were down there, and we found in 2017 that it didn't work really well because it was so wet that, you know, like it's been for the past couple, couple months here, that the groundwater elevation was so high, as the water went down, it's no place for it to recharge to, because it was just the groundwater, so basements were getting wet, not from backup sewage, but the groundwater. So we're going to do some simulation, we're going to simulate different intensity storms, and by modeling every node in the system, we're going to come up with projects that we can do, even more detention, more divergent, some kinds of stuff, some other projects that we can do to mitigate, to mitigate the flooding of Western Avenue, flooding at some intersection in Melrose, but the more important thing, the more important thing is to try to minimize and eliminate the backup in the basements, because frankly, that's what the state's concerned about. The D E C doesn't care about, we care about, it's a quality of life issue, a safety issue for us, but the real issue that D E C's concerned about is the backups in the basements. So the other element that I need to point here, is in 2008, the city had a consent order to initiate a backwater valve grant program. At that time, I think in those first couple years, they probably did about 250 backwater valves, the recourse of a grant was $1,500. We asked the water board to increase that grant to $2,000, and we've had some additional traffic in that, but we're not getting as many as we want, so we've been promoting this, it's been, it's on our website, we've been sending it out with bills, we've been talking about it to the neighbor association, besting council members, to kick that grant to the neighbor, but the $2,000 essentially pays for the backwater valve and all the water that's coming in from. So we want to continue to promote that program in the event that folks have that as an issue. And just the last year, I haven't had before, going to these other boards, is we've put $2 million a year, and we've put dedicated funds. We've been doing that for a while, we've had about $2.1 million, we just took $4 million out to put it to dedicate this to capital projects until we get our financing received. And we put $3 million every year on our operating budget for capital projects, so we're not bonding that, we're borrowing money for that, we're actually paying for our operating budget. And since 1994, it's been $77 million in capital projects, and since 2014, when I became commissioner in the mayor's administration, we've done $36 million in capital improvements. We've talked about the long-term control plan, the Beaver Creek Project, Albany's share of the long-term control plan is $60 million, the entire long-term control plan is about $108 million, and of the $60 million, the Beaver Creek Project that we've talked about tonight is $45 million. We have received $27 million in grants since 2014, and due to the national CFA program. And I have left copies of the five-year capital plan tonight, that are pretty detailed, the front two, looking at that total of about $106 million over the next five years. So I want to just take a second to go through, take Tom's best, and the last meeting, for some idea of what the sewer sheds are in the city of Albany. Beaver Creek Sewer Shed is this large area, it's 25% of our areas, the largest sewer shed in the city, it's a combined sewer district. And it all follows down, this is where we're talking about Lincoln Park, the people, God, why are we making all this sewer stuff come in our area? Because everything follows down to the Beaver Creek outlet here at our stream. And if you remember, this was probably the first map that showed in 1790, this is where a lot of, you know, the colony of Albany really was, that was where we started. And the other thing...
So that's the big statement, what they refer to as the big statement.
Yeah. So part, we have separated sewers that are Pine Forest, this part of the Truman Creek, the northern area, all this area here goes to a wastewater plant that's up near D G S, up to section D, it's called the Albany County Water Plant. These are all separated sewers. The combined sewers, the total fully combined sewers are these areas here, Island Creek, Santo, and Beaver Creek, which all have overflows and regulators along the Hudson River, and again, Beaver Creek is the largest one, and that's the big project we have, but remember we've been doing these floatables project right down Orange Street, this kind of, we've got that closed a little bit, sorry to the folks there. Go ahead. But we've completed five floatables projects, which we are essentially separating the floatables out there as well, and they're going directly into the sewer, so we're not trucking that as well. The difference between that project and the Beaver Creek project is we don't have to disinfect or put, or de-coordinate those floatables facilities, but we do have to disinfect Beaver Creek. And the Crunk Hill area up here, Crunk Hill Sewer District is essentially separated sewers, so the storm sewers are separate, and they go out to the Crunk Hill, the sanitary sewers are, then go through the Woodville Pump Station, and Woodville goes over towards Hack, Hack Bull or Crunk. So I'm going to talk about that a little bit, because there's concern about overflow to Woodville, that was one of the permanent points. I've been commissioner since 2014, all the rain events we've had, we have not had one overflow event, either dry weather or wet weather or Crunk Hill, in fact, it's actually, we don't have a monster that involves. Cars that all disappear again from, down to Marcus Hill, where it's, we talked about the dock facilities, et cetera. All that wastewater goes to a pump station at the Cormac Road, and that's kind of pumped back up, again, into the combined sewer system. But again, there's a lot of separated storm sewers down here as well. So I just wanted, that's a little bit of background on sewer disaster. And the question was, what are we doing in the upper, upper water? These are some citywide flood mitigation projects that I talked about. Most of them are in Beaver Creek area, all of these projects are in Beaver Creek. Some of them, I think, were in place before I became commissioner, like all these separation projects are on Buckingham Pond, they were started in 1993, some additional work was done in 2013. These are, it says proposed, it's an accident grant, these are recharge bases in Melrose. The reason we can do that up there is to split it pretty simply, the rest of the city's got tight source, place of, and those are so much. We talked a little bit before about the work we're, hands and writing, this area holds about 1.2 million gallons of combined storage. These are multiple exits we've done on Beaver Creek, there are six bases of that. These are a combination of combined sewer storage and separate storage that goes back to the system. We're going to be working on a project with Albany down at the Flyman, separate out some other sewer, bring that down into Foyle Street, and that goes down to Elbron, which is part of Washington Park Lake. We're trying to put a lot of technology on all these systems so that we can optimize the amount of storage we get in there, so that none of this will go back into the combined sewers, causing overflow. The deal of the project is balance, backups, flooding, overflow into Hudson River. So I'm going through this pretty quickly, I'll check out this one. But there's a couple other projects I wanted to talk about that are kind of germane into what are we doing to make sure that we minimize backups into the system. It says future, this is the project, it's actually construction now, we're building a pump station on a Harrow campus, that currently the forest name will go down and discharge into the Beaver Creek. This is 3 million gallons a day of sewage, of waste, of wastewater, that's going to be taken out of the Beaver Creek system, and currently the dry weather flow in Beaver Creek sewers is about 14 million gallons a day, we're taking 3 million gallons a day out, and that's going over to the Truman Creek, the Truman Creek. That's, that's the big project for us. And the other project we have is when we redid our purchase agreement for water, kind of Gildon buys water from us. So we said, okay, you buy water from us, but you're also using one of our sewers that we don't really charge it for, it goes into the Truman. So what we want to do is we want to take, this is the Woodville Pump Station, we want to intercept 200,000 gallons a day of wastewater that's, that's going to Woodville, and we want to divert that over to Gildon and into the Crunk Hill. So that's essentially going to take 3.2 million gallons a day of wastewater out of Beaver Creek and putting it into the Truman Creek. That's the deal for us as well. So the other thing to think about is, I think, Tom, that's a little bit of the West meeting, you know, what's the design capacity of some of these sewers? Combined sewers are different from secondary sewers, because they're not really designed. They build into what they think is going to be a tenure of storm, if you like. And in this case, we put, we call these smart covers, we've got a bunch of them, we put them in hips, like every place we can put them now, to look at what the elements are that we've got going on in that town. The Albany County South Plan treats about 45 million gallons a day, it can't be 45 million gallons a day, right now, it usually gets between 25 and 35. This shows a period in January where we had, we tried by the, while groundwater was up, and we had about a half inch of rain on the day, and it shows how it peaks. The other challenge at the plant is that we actually have our sewers where they get into the Hudson River, they don't all have tie gates on them, so if the tie gets up to a certain level, we have to get the river coming back in. So we've got projects this year that are going to go out, we're going to put tie gates and make sure all the tie gates are working on the ones that we have, so the river's not coming back in, going back to the plant, and getting seen more capacity. But this shows the dry, the dry weather flow, which generally, yeah, it's about 18, 18 gallons, and it goes to 31, and it shows a peak, so we've got some elements here, I'll show it clearly. This is, we'll put some information down at Big C, and like I said, we're getting about 14 million gallons a day normally, this is the dry weather period, you know, night half a day, it's down to nine, empty day, but on Sundays it might go up to 15, but the average is around 14. This is a day that it rain, and you can see where Big C goes up a little bit. And one of the things we've done there is that we were actually overflowing sooner than we had to, because the way that the end of the regulations set up is that water was going to the river, when in fact, the water couldn't go down to the treatment plant. We've actually taken that out, so we're sending more water to the plant and actually go up to the river. This is, this is again, this is Big C, and that shows a little bit more clearly, this is where the overflow level is, that's where actually overflow is in the river. Most of them, this is Hack Bullard, this is where, Hack Bullard, this is where Woodville pumps to, and sometimes you'll see where Hack Bullard, we have four to rain in an hour, you know, we have a big, it will flood down here, the big center, down in the Crown Terrace. And this is what we hardly... And this is what we normally, we get 12 inches of flow, and sewers is eight forces in diameter. So there's a lot of capacity in these sewers, even when it rains, unless we get the four inches or any of those, everything. So it's kind of tough to tell, and Central is actually designed for population, et cetera, but that's not the case. This is Woodville. And, you know, this is, this is where we overflow, this is kind of what we're getting, this is the one, this is the general, it's pretty typical, and they've got this, this is a rain day, it goes to rain that day, we've got one more, one more. This is the Long Term Plant. This is three, this is four inches of flow with the South Plant, which is the red, total pool of the sewer district is the blue. And you see the trend line here, running up, trends, you know, with the South Plant, it's around 20 to 21 million gallons a day, and that plant has capacity of 40 to 45. So we've got capacity, it's what we don't have capacity for is the four inches of rain in, in an hour. And I went out today and actually I've got, I went, it's called T, technical paper 40, I've actually looked at it today, those storms that we've had, four inches of rain in an hour is probably a 500-year event, which means that's a really high, it's highly probable that what they happen. A hundred-year storm here is probably 20 and a half inches, you know, in, in an hour. So that's-
Tax is-
Yeah, well, again, this is, you know, the ocean to give more of, and the weather patterns of swirles, that's what we're seeing. There's one other element I thought I knew you were interested in, which I wanted to share with you now.
And then we need to-
Yes.
I agree.
You can bring it back, because we've got a rush. I'm just calling for people up there, I don't want to confuse you.
You can meet with the Commissioner one-on-one.
One of the things that the ECS does, we have to follow compliance to-
Doesn't have to be in a caucus meeting.
... best acting practice number nine. Purposes of that is-
We have committees for it.
Yeah, General Services, we have.
Based backups, as a result of increasing development or additions to the wastewater system. So I wanted to share with you, and I apologize for the conflict, because this is a, I had the existing conditions, the building there now, about 600,000 a day of use, and there is a weather weather, there's a storm quarter connection on that site that goes to a sand that goes to the sewer. So the flow there now is about 33.27 gallons a minute, in an existing condition. The proposed condition would be amount of wastewater that may actually develop or to a uniform amount of flow actually to the water pump, that's about 15 gallons a minute. And then they're going to take, disconnect a catch basin from that development and make that catch basin go directly to a storm sewer, and take that out, it's about 31 gallons a minute of inflight that's being produced. So the net flow to the Sand Curtis sewer after the development is times 15 gallons a minute, which is 46% reduction in the foot that's there now. And that's the kind of, that's the kind of philosophy and strategy that we're using for every development opposed to the system. And then again, to summarize the other elements of the divisions that we're doing on Beaver Creek. And again, Beaver Creek is a, so it doesn't have any dry weather overflow that Big C.
Jenny?
I just, I would love to, because I feel, I would like, I would like more of this too, but I, I would love it if we could, could we do a caucus night where we focus on-
Or, or DGS committee meeting.
Or, I mean, just, it's one of those things where it's like-
That's, that's what functions as a committee. Or DGS committee meeting will do it.
And, and I, like, I feel like we're, if somebody can beat a labor machine and it's probably nobody else's members, that guy, he's talking about, who really has it.
A DGS committee meeting will do it.
Uh, Tom?
Sure. I got email from Peter Barf in New England saying they don't want our sewers, and they got, you know, most of them.
Well, Peter Barf was hiding, back in January. Yeah, now, 73, you should.
Second, you know, you're talking about Woodville, that's no problem, I have residents on Deacon Avenue, right off of Park Street Boulevard, who had super backups of November, October of this year, there's a lot of work on on over there. So, and that's the thing, so, and I know their bases have definitely backed up, so whether it was below, I mean, that's the first I heard.
Actually, they've had surface flooding at the bottom of Beacon, with a lot of Wellington, 2931 Wellington, who proposed London Drive retention base at 31 Wellington, probably did not want to sign either. So again, you can only do so much, we can't, we can't make you sign either.
All right, we can schedule another follow-up and focus more on this.
So everybody, if we're okay with the rule-
Can you bring it to the temple, what we saw?
Okay. Otherwise, yes, we're all, we're okay with the home rule, we're doing that one. So let's, because we have a lot, a lot more to cover tonight. I want to go back now to new resolutions, going to Resolution 305219R. This relates to a salary adjustment in Youth and Workforce Services. Raphael, you're here for that?
Yes.
So if you can, let me just pull that resolution up. And this related to two positions within the department?
Correct.
Um, there's not a lot of information here, so if you could just give a quick overview?
Okay, currently we have two positions.
Is this an MC or-
No, this is a resolution that was on your agenda, it was the last one, 305219R.
Oh.
And this relates to two changes in, it's the senior employment training specialist. Two of those, or is that just a-
Two.
Okay, go ahead.
So currently in our department, we have two vacant positions, as mentioned, we have gone through the posting process, those who responded, came to the department, we interviewed, those interviewed, we did offer one person the position, she ultimately declined due to the salary. We're finding it very difficult in our department to fill positions, two issues, salary-wise as well as the residency requirement. We're not so concerned much about the residency requirement as far as salary. We're looking at getting seasoned employees who can do the job with skillful. All of the responders that did apply for the position, majority or almost half were not sent to the department due to this gap in their skill sets. We need a unique skill set, working with our adults and youth, with helping them transition from where they are to get them engaged into school, training, and ultimately employment. So this is a request for a decent salary for those two vacant positions.
What's the increase?
Big bar?
What's the position?
$7,000.
Her.
And what's the position?
Senior employment training specialist.
So there are two positions, senior employment training specialist, and it's a $7,000 increase for each one.
Correct.
For total transfer of $14,000.
From 42 to 82 to 49 to 82.
Right.
42 to 82 to 49 to 82.
It's in the memo on the company's resolution. Does that, and you can work for, your, your-
Grant funded.
You're grant funded totally.
You're grant funded, so it's not, that's not general fund money, it comes out of grants.
So this is grant funded, why?
Is-
If it's funded?
The position?
Their whole budget, their whole budget. So there are two parts, they have youth and workforce, and then they also have the Department of Recreation, and so it's two parts, it's really like, one example. Does anybody have any questions?
The money is-
Correct.
Yeah, it's no increase, it's just reality. Any questions on this? Or problems, not, would like to try to move this on Monday? Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Huh? Because it's that, the whole budget is going to fund it, so, the city budget, it's still a salary. Okay. All right, Jack, you want to carry it up?
That needs to be changed. We need to review the city charter, don't you? Are you going to be around?
Oh, come on. Yeah, read our 20-year review. Okay, I'm going to quickly go back to the beginning of the agenda and move through this. The other items are pretty straightforward. We might have minutes, I haven't had a chance to look at them, we might have minutes for our prior meeting before to Monday, but we don't have those right now. There's nothing on local laws, on ordinances, the only ordinance potential is number six, which is the Hen Ordinance, the Law Committee is meeting on that tomorrow, and depending on how that committee goes, that could come up for a vote on Monday, all right? Otherwise, I don't have any action on the ordinances. Any questions on, on the ordinances held? Okay. Then going on to resolutions introduced, 245219R by Mr. Anani would waive civil service exam fees for Albany High graduate, is this Albany High or just high school graduates? Any high school graduate who resides with the City of Albany? Right, okay. This has been approved by the Civil Service Commission, so it's just supporting the Civil Service Commission action, so this would be a pass for Monday. Okay. Um, yeah. On Resol, number 255219, this relates to pedestrian-activated crosswalk signals, sometimes called beg buttons. This will be an introduction, and it's going to be referred to planning, so that we can talk just generally about crosswalks, pedestrian issues, things like that, and the policy and how this might impact things, et cetera.
Who's this?
Uh, this is Mr. Anani also. I'm just moving, unless there's questions, I'm going to sort of move through this.
Is that going to the committee?
Uh, planning.
Planning.
The next three resolutions, 26, 27, and 28, are all confirming reappointments to members of the parking authority. As we've discussed previously, all of these, that, these terms expired a long time ago, so we're trying to get this cleaned up. So they will be all, this will all be introductions by Ms. Fahey and a referral to the planning The next resolution, 2952, by Council Members Love and Anani, congratulates the Albany Patroons, that will be a pass. All members sponsors?
Yeah. I just got a question.
Sure.
We talked about recognizing Albany Academy for their Federation.
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah, so, I don't know how, I've seen your award, I've seen your award, so.
Oh, okay.
Or I don't know whose award.
Yeah, he didn't want to.
Albany Academies is the-
Pretty sure.
It's happening seventh of the ninth, isn't it?
It's the seventh.
It's Catholic.
And what was the award again, I'm so sorry.
They won the, they-
They won the state.
For basketball?
Yeah.
And I think it's a boys' basketball.
Yes.
And so you have to get a sign.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, we do it for every high school, so.
So we do a resolution, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you're right, because we do it for every high school, I want it to state, well, it's bigger than the state.
All right.
It's the whole nation.
The whole state.
Whole state, state federations.
Okay, then moving forward, so we'll, we'll get something in the works on that. Moving forward, 3052, which is the one we just talked about, for Youth and Workforce Services, Mr. Flynn, that will be a pass. We have two MCs, 315219R, is that distributed, or people have that?
No.
Okay. 31, it's, or it may not have a number typed on it, it's by the one by Mr. Kimbrough and Mr. Robinson. This is a resolution supporting two pieces of tenant-related housing legislation in the state legislature. One would extend what's commonly known as the rent control regulations downstate, statewide. The other thing, the other one would establish tenant eviction protections, and they're both in that one resolution. This is an introduction for Monday, and would be referred to the Housing Committee.
Which we've already arranged a meeting on the 30th, we scheduled a meeting for this month on the 30th, for this issue.
On May 30th, all right.
Do you guys have to go to the actual bill?
Yeah, so you get a copy of the bill, because you're actually voting on the bill.
I sent it to in that initial email.
Okay.
I'll send it to you.
All right, so that, that's an introduction and referral to housing. Then 3252 is the Beaver Creek one.
Who's sponsoring that legislation?
That's Mr. Kimbrough and Mr. Robinson, putting that in. 32 is the Beaver Creek Home Rule, I think Kathy, you carried the last time, but this kind of is on the other side.
About the Home Rule one?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
But this one is on the other side of Martin Luther King.
Oh, okay, so Derek.
So Derek, are you okay carrying, because this part of the Home Rule on Beaver Creek is actually on your side of Martin Luther King?
Yeah, almost.
Okay, so you can carry that, and Kathy, you can go sponsor, so we can do it. Derek, can you be the lead? And that's all I had on the resolutions.
With all that we're taking up, do you think it's still feasible to have Derek, the other stuff over there?
Uh, we're going to get, we're going to get to that in a sec.
Maybe with the patroons coming, everybody knows.
Whatever, I don't, are the patroons coming?
It would be great, it would be great, we're just going to present it.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to, if we have the patroons coming, we're going to take that out of order and do that up front.
Thank you.
Okay, was that your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, that's my question, I was going to just talk about some of the Michael Bryan and I.
We're not through the budget yet, I mean, we're not through the agenda yet. Okay, the remaining resolutions I have as holes. All right, I want to get quickly then, because this is, then relates to the Youth and Government Act, so what we're going to do, just going back, we are going to, after our moment of silence, I'm going to make a motion to take a resolution out of order, and that will be the one congratulating the patroons, number 29, because they will, people will be here to receive that. So we will do that up front, we'll take that out of order, so we can do a presentation, they don't have to stay around for the whole thing, and we can move forward, and then we'll go back to our regular agenda, okay? And remember, we're going to have a lot of people here Monday night, because we'll have the parents and the students and everything else, so we're going to start at 5:30, really with an introduction and an orientation of the students and a picture, et cetera, so we're going to try to do all of that between 5:30 and 6:30, and then at 6:30 do our regular caucus, which we'll go through a little bit more slowly to make, you know, so we can explain to the audience what we're doing, and then we'll go on to our meeting at 7:00. So there's a lot there. We do have a few things that will be taken up on Monday night, so we do have some things, hopefully will be an interesting meeting. Maybe we'll have the Hens, I don't know.
Oh, they always are.
Yes.
So we, we will start.
Will be, everything will be in the chamber, we won't be in here Monday night, everything will be in the chamber.
Again, starting at 5:30.
Yeah, so we can be there at 5:30, because that's when we'll, you should have gotten the list from Michelle, we'll assign the students, we'll introduce them, we'll swear them in, we'll do a, you know, we'll do an orientation of how the council works and all that kind of stuff, we'll try to have some time to do a group picture, and then around 6:30, we'll go back to do our regular caucus and move forward.
Also, just like, guys, now there is a public carer cabaret, we have one.
Yes, exactly.
But it's at 5 o'clock, and we'll be in the city corner.
Which one is that?
Elbatron, up on, dropping in.
Yeah, no, you sent out the other one, but that's later.
A lot of public carers present to council.
Right, no.
Okay. So the FYI.
That, that will be in here about, so we're going to, we're going to be, all our stuff is going to be in the chamber. All right, I have to, so we, so just quickly on Monday then, we will be taking up, we'll be doing the Petron Resolution first, we might be doing the Hen Ordinance, and then we'll do the Civil Service, the workforce adjustment, the Beaver Creek Home Rule, so those are the items we'll be taking up with the students on Monday. Any other, before we move on to just a little bit more, any other issues on the agenda? And then, Michelle, do you want to do a quick update on Youth and, Youth and Government? Or do we have to do anything? Any questions on Youth and Government? Have we basically covered that?
We can tell the Yelks, 9 now?
Now, do we know, I don't know, you mentioned, so usually we have dinner at the Yelks, I don't know how long Monday's meeting is going to go, because I don't know about public comment.
But we could just release the students early.
Yeah, but do we have the dinners?
8:30.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Is it scheduled?
Is it scheduled?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, two minutes for public comment.
So I respond on what we can know.
Gotcha, depends on how many, if ten people, I'll have three, I'll give them four.
We'll have to, we'll have to play it by ear.
Because we're.
I don't think it's gonna go that long, quickly, Derek?
I just, I'm sorry, I missed when Raphael was in here talking about people being underpaid. The problem that I have with Parks and Recreation is that for the last five years, they have been creating these positions, and the money and the funding is really not touching the community in terms of the people that are going in those community centers, those community centers have nothing to do, and we keep on talking about salaries of people, you know, we're creating these positions, and it's not trickling down to touching the community, and then they're having community meetings asking for partnerships and asking for the community to come up with ideas of how to address the deficits that are in the community, so, once again, you know, I have a strong opposition to that, I had a strong opposition to it when it first started happening, I worked for Parks and Recreation for a number of years, they had Johnny D and Goose as their staff, and, you know, things were happening in the community, and in the last five years, all you get is our commissioner is supportive when people call and make complaints about what is not happening in our, in the city, and I've said it a number of times, I'm a product of the school district, I'm a product of Parks and Rec, what they offer to us as younger members of the community, and it just seems like it's more attention paid to salaries versus to what is actually going on in these community centers. I invited everybody at this table for us to go and see Arbor Hill Community Center, and for us to take a look at Hoffman Recreation, nobody took us, you know, took us up on the offer, and, you know, here it is, again, they're coming in talking about people are underpaid, so.
Yeah, this is not on the Parks and Rec side, this is on?
No, this, well, and the, and the, it's.
This youth.
It's on the youth and workforce services side, which is.
Well, it's the same, you know, it's the same conversation.
It's a different budget stream, different budget than Parks and Rec.
So a grant on it, right?
It does come from grants, yeah.
But I, well, maybe I wanna go back to the first time I said something about the Parks and Recreation, and, you know, when you're riding down the street, you see kids playing out in front of a library, and you hear us complaining about our kids being in front of a library against a community center two blocks away, why aren't they going to a community center? Because it's nothing to offer our kids in a community center, and, you know, you hear me get adamant, you hear me get loud when these types of conversations come up when we talk about people are being underpaid.
Was that also part of the public safety meeting that dealt on?
Yeah.
That discussion.
And I brought that up, I brought that up there, I brought that up there as well, and then when the, the report, they never made mention to some of the things that we talked about in that meeting, so, once again, I have to be that voice that hasn't been heard in a long time about this same run-out conversation that we're having, that this mission, this administration keeps on creating these positions, and the funding is not touching the people that it's designed for. And I get silenced every time I say this, and I, you know, the stuff that I feel strongly about, I'm gonna make noise about, and I'm sorry if it's not the right time, but, you know.
Never the wrong time to.
I'm shooting down on Second and Clinton, and I'm saying that's Parks and Rec or workforce developments' fault, but our kids have nothing to do, they're playing in the streets, they're playing around.
City should buy the YMCA and open it up again, I see.
No, but.
They closed the YMCA, and they talked about moving it to South Ferry to the South Basin Army, they have somewhere in the second.
But I think that's a fair point, because if Parker Recreation is a community center, and they're not going there, and we're saying, well, the Y should do something, that's an issue, like, we have to figure out why aren't they going to our community centers.
Because they become suburban.
Because that's what I keep asking, when people say, oh, we need community centers, I say, no, we don't, our ones that we have aren't full, so if they're not full, that's the next question, are we not providing the right services that they want in those community centers, or is the people, or, we have to figure out, we're paying for this, if they're not using them, then we have to figure out, we have to ask that question, why?
Do a survey, see what the kids.
Like, why, why, why are they, why are they in front of Albany Public Library, and not at the community center which is two blocks up?
Well, you know, Derek, you're saying there's silence, I absolutely agree with you, I sat in that meeting that you're talking about, and people were, you know, it was just you saying that, that this is needed, it was very powerful, there were, you know, many, many individuals saying that kids do not have enough to do, and they're out on the streets, so, but we've got to have that conversation, what's going on at the community center, why isn't it working? I don't know, I haven't been there, you tell me, and do you walk in?
There's a complete presence, I don't want to dominate, but I'm just telling you right now, all types of emotions are going through my body, because I see our kids, they want places to go, if you go to Teen Night, it's, it's.
Yup, it's well.
If you go to Teen Night, they'll come when it's something for them to do, but, you know, if you have a gym, which they have at Mark, part of the problem at Fifty Mark Street is the fact that the middle school is there, so that's not, you know, all Parks and Recreation, but we not coming up with an alternative plan to address the new needs, it's a new need because that building isn't able to service Parks and Rec like it used to be.
I think we have a great conversation to have, and I think we have some great time to ponder and time to talk about, I have a real conversation.
I'm, 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 my partners, my partners, as I said, we have a responsibility.
I agree with you, but what I'm saying is, we have the school district here, they have schools.
That's not.
But, but what I'm saying is, they're taught, you know, we don't have resources to build community centers anywhere, what if we use the resources that we already have in our community? Yes, we don't oversee it, but let's bring in our own, we all, it's all our kids.
Yup.
So I was gonna say to you like this, right, like, it's kinda condescending to bring up partnerships when we have money that's allocated that is supposed to be going directly in terms of.
Good to say.
The community, like, you know, one of the things, before we start trying to have a conversation with the school district, how about us having a conversation with the county that has never operated, you know, in conjunction with the city to benefit, to fully serve the whole city?
Right, but, hold on, hold, no disrespect to anyone, but we still have two other entities here to have this, that still have information and discussion, so. I think we should call a public, I mean, Parker Recreation meeting, because I think it's very, very important that we do have that discussion, and, because, as Mr. Johnson said, they're at their library, but they're not at a block, two blocks up, that's an issue, and we have to get to the bottom of that, especially when we're, we're spending money, we shouldn't say, it's different.
I'm just saying, if they're right for them to come, and without a, this long event, it's gonna be pointless if we're gonna just sit there and listen.
No, 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 we're going to, we're gonna express our concerns.
Do we need more of the committee?
Alright.
We can have a.
Yeah, we have two presentations, um, maybe, I have to go, maybe just gonna skip those two, unless you want me to census, whatever.
Okay, yeah, I'll skip.
Capitalize is.
You should not be looking.
You can skip that.
Okay. Just real quick, okay, Mr. Condie has to leave, so I'm gonna finish up, a couple of issues from our leadership meeting, the discussion about the Census Complete Count Committee, myself, Richard, Alfredo, you're on that committee, we have Spots, and Cory, we're looking for three additional members, we're trying to get representation from the second, first and second ward, and also Arbor Hill on that Census Complete, so I figured you. The thing is, the meetings right now are gonna, well, the next meeting's Monday at nine, it's tomorrow at nine AM, but, um, in general, it's gonna be bi-weekly meetings, I know, so, so here's a question, just think about, a representative, yeah, Jacque, you and Dorsey can kinda get together and figure out who you want to participate in.
Well, I can't believe we need so that people who have nine to five, you know, ten, is it tough to have nine to five?
Well, the meeting time prior to that was like one-thirty in the afternoon, at two-hundred, so it was tough, it was, so, so, okay, I'll, in the meeting tomorrow, are you gonna be there? Because we'll, I'll bring it up tomorrow and try to figure out a way to flex.
Where's the meeting tomorrow?
Uh, it's two hundred, Henry Johnson Boulevard, upstairs.
At what time?
Nine AM.
The only way I can make that on the meeting is if you talk.
You get what I'm saying? I'll have to grab, yeah, I'll grab her here, so, okay, so that was, that was the one, that was, that was the one, no, that was, that issue, so we could skip that. Next, we'll move on to capitalize Albany for the CFA process.
I'll talk as a faculty's around.
Yes, thank you.
We are on the ninth round of the CFA process, so this is new to none of you guys at this point, there's, once again, seven hundred and fifty million dollars of resources for community development and economic development grants within, you know, the entire state, in order to be considered for an award, and applicant has to submit an application through the online consolidated funding application, that's at regional councils dot NY dot gov. We've distributed some emails prior about this announcement, it opened May first, it will continue to be open until July twenty-sixth at four PM, that's the deadline. We are, once again, Capitalize Albany is gonna serve as the local liaison for that process, so what that means is, we can help with letters of support from the mayor, we can help with getting the resolutions from you all, if a project needs a resolution of municipal support, we also can help with technical assistance on specific applications, so if someone has a project in mind, and they're not really sure what application that they should, they should go for, or if they know what application they should go for, and they need to kind of refine their project, that's what I'm here to help with. So just kind of moving through the priorities of the CFA, they mix them up a little bit this year, changed them up a little bit, placemaking and downtown revitalization will remain, workforce development will continue, they additionally add a childcare needs and potential solutions, and economic and environmental justice as priorities through the CFA, so what that means is what the regional councils would like to see, projects try to address those types of initiatives, projects that address those priorities specifically and meet those will, you know, score better within the scoring process. New to the CFA?
I'm sorry, is that the list of categories something that's on there?
You have, this one sheet that you have is the list of all the programs, and it tells you how much money is available from each program, that is the total amount of money, not the amount that an individual project could be awarded, no, so you would.
In order to have like three, first of all, like downtown, and then.
Oh, that is, and then the child, the one I'm missing is this, child, you know, my job here. Those are not actually categories within the grant resources, those are priorities that an application or a project will hit on in order to, you know, get, you know, priorities for.
Could you, could you have sent it to me?
Yeah. New to the CFA this year, Department of State added the Brownfield Opportunity Area Program, so that'll be to initiative, initiate brownfield opportunity sites and implementation on those sites. And then separately from the Community Development and Economic Development CFA, a major announcement came up this year, there's a workforce development CFA that is, is separate from this process, it's an open round grant, so I don't wanna kind of confuse things a little bit here, but it is a big announcement, it's a hundred and seventy-five million dollars worth of resources for workforce development, those will be available open round, it started May eighth, so those are available, Department of Labor Resources and some other folks, some other agencies will be contributing to that, so that's huge, and Commissioner Jones would likely have more information.
When you say open round, what is that?
There's no deadline, so the way I review the application process, and it looks like it's a two-part process, you work with your regional council, you give them a proposal of what type of workforce development initiative that you're looking to do, they give you approval to submit a full application, so once you've gotten that approval from the regional council, you can move forward.
Who do you say the regional council now?
It's usually, it's generally comprised of, you know, what they consider experts in the community development and economic development field, or local.
Mike, 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 Mike.
Mike Geverly is the director of the Capital District Regional Office of Empire State Development, but the regional council is comprised of about twenty other individuals.
Who's the chair of the hour? I know it used to be Barbara, but I don't know, I don't think he's there anymore.
I am blanking right now, because it just changed recently.
You mentioned Commissioner Jones, what, I, I heard that, I was saying.
Yeah, for the, for the workforce development initiative.
Oh, for the workforce, okay, okay.
Just to kind of talk things through as far as ideas and projects. So, back to the Community Development, Economic Development, CFA, opened May first at nine AM, there was a workshop May eighth at Hudson Valley Community College that we've put in our prior correspondence, Capitalize Albany will be personally hosting a workshop this Monday at five-thirty in the City Hall Rotunda, so we'll be there to give the overview, much like we're giving you guys, but more in-depth for the actual applicants, because you guys have been through this year after year. June twelfth, there will be a workshop also at Proctor's Theater, so that's the second and last Capital Region Workshop for the CFI, so if someone, you know, misses our workshop and wants more in-depth overview from the regional councils, they can go to that workshop. As far as internal process things, in order to get resolutions from you all, we need a project form like we always get from the applicants, we have distributed the link for that, if anybody needs us to redistribute a PDF of that or anything, contact me, I can get it to you. That project form will be due to us on June twenty-sixth, so you will have that, I think you have that in your emails, we will distribute those project forms to you all the following day, so basically, we'll compile them all, get them by close of business that day, and as soon as we have as much information as we can on the projects, we will send them out to you guys so that you have them to look at. Then we will present to you on July tenth at your caucus, so we'll give you the overview of each of the projects, we'll have the applicants here to answer questions, as they always are, and then we'll have the vote on the following Monday, on July fifteen, all set up to get all that back to the applicants before July twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Following that, awards will be made in December, like always, so, that's pretty much it.
Anyone have any questions?
It has to, uh, data that I think that we're going to have, I'm not sure if you have this information, do you have the information of the current vacancies for new builds that are in support, I know that they issue by now in the city, and I know that, you know, there's something to answer, you know, we'll go with more than what we can handle, so if you have that data on how those, those, or we can't open up, how the vacancy is, and you assume all of this.
I believe through the, there's a database where there goes information on different types of vacancies and buildings, and you can, they can look up information, I think actually, anybody who has the user ID and everything, can look up information on when there's been calls made to different buildings, when, you know, houses are sold, but that'll be like data on the.
That's not, that's what Sarah explained to a neighbor association where there was a donut, to deal with one of these buildings, she said that all these buildings, that's enough of vacant, it was a low number, I want to know if it changed with, you know, with new buildings coming up, and if that's other buildings that maybe were five years already up open, because.
So I think, I think the number you're specifically asking for is the ninety-seven percent occupancy rate that the downtown bid and Capitalize Albany will state is what is the, you know, for new buildings falling off, that's typically what has been seen, you know, I think that continues, I think whenever recent inquiry came, we actually checked in with Parks and Rec Developments to see what their, you know, how they were filling those spaces, and it was, it was really good, it's hard to doubt, so there's been no downward trend in those.
Can we get some more information about that, and that would determine how the dashboard numbers, so we can have a better understanding, and if those numbers are also reflecting a more actual data, whether new builds are coming up, still working on all the buildings.
What'd you say? Right now, someone's like, they're coming right up. What'd she say? Right now, someone's like, they're coming right up. So we're good?
Yes. If we're gonna fill all these new buildings, have a growth of buildings.
Did she understand your question?
I don't know who tracks that. I don't know who tracks that. I don't think, I don't think.
Yes. Okay, so if no one has any other questions, I'm, I'm gonna have our friends from the school district come up.
Mike, I don't think Capitalize Albany tracks that. I think they track down some stuff. Mike. I think they only track like downtown. I don't think they track new, new development in our, in our neighborhood. I think they only do downtown.
Oh, I was thinking, I keep thinking of parks. Do we have any idea?
Yeah, but I don't think they track them. If they're not downtown, they don't track them. But somebody has tracked that. So we gotta find out who tracks that.
Canada, Canada, I'm on it.
How are you on that? That's a conflict of interest.
They asked me, did somebody vote me in?
That's conflict of interest, by the way. I mean, a city.
Yes.
When we gonna get, like?
Oh, I'm saying, yeah. I'll take one. Your predecessor. I think we booked too many people to me.
You think? For presentations?
And of course now he's gone.
He said his piece broke out?
Well, good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Pretty good, pretty good.
Great. Thank you so very much for having us back. We know that just a little while ago, we brought you information about our budget and what we were looking at. And so now that we are absolutely down to the wire, the board has approved this to go before our voters next week. And so with me today, I'm Kweeta Adams. I'm the superintendent. And so with me today, we have Ann Savage, who is our board president. I'm Ron Lesto, who is our Director of Communications and Operations. And Bill Hogan, who is our money man. He's our Deputy Superintendent of Business and Finance. And so we have everyone here to ask any, um, additional questions that may exist. As you know, we have two propositions. We have the budget itself, and we also have the facilities referendum. And so, um, before we get into the video, I'll hand it off to Ann, and then we'll watch our, our last video.
Appreciate so much you had us back again so soon. I just wanted to close the loop on the things we talked about last time. You guys enjoying any influx of emails into your inboxes from the district? Is that where you're finding that helpful?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I love it, by the way. I love it.
If you need to change those, reduce, add, subtract, which is what we are, and Ron can help you get that figured out. If you have any trouble, actually Danielle's a pretty good expert at that too, from her good old days, and with the district. So we can get you guys straightened out. So we know we gave you a lot of this information when we were here two months ago, because it was coming along. We were close. But this is the final presentation, the same one that we're using with the neighborhoods. We are gonna ask you to, to watch this short video, because we figured out that we can get through the information faster if we do it on the video. Because if we start talking, we're like Joe Coffey. We love what we do, and we start getting really into detail, and it takes longer. So we're gonna show you the video. It's eight minutes, and that'll give you the overview, and then we can answer any question, additional questions you still have.
Hello, my name is Kweeta Adams, and I'm the Superintendent of City's Government and Superintendent. This year, we have developed a presentation to share with you the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty proposed budget and facilities referendum. Our presentation features the voices of our students, faculty, and staff as their homes were most impacted by the collective decisions we made. We begin with our guiding principles, which establish a clear vision and mission and focus on five priority goals. Over the past year, we have made progress toward our goals and numerous achievements. A few of these highlights include nine schools in good standing. Allney High graduation rates increased to sixty-eight percent. Our student efficiency increased from nineteen percent to twenty-three percent in E O A for students in grades three through eight. Our Board of Education adopted its first ever equity in education policy. The Allney Marshall Falcons were selected to participate in the seventy-fifth D-Day ceremonies in France. And the Allney High Boys Soccer and Girls Basketball Teams achieved high state ratings. In addition to these highlights, our budget supports many diverse programs, background services, and opportunities for our nine thousand four hundred students.
I'm Bill Hogan, Deputy Superintendent of Business and Finance. I'm going to be providing you with some additional information about some of the items that we need to provide. On this slide, I'm gonna be discussing mandates requiring additional resources. The first three items are for finance teachers to provide additional stacking for labs at third state level. The next item is expanded voting crimes. This year, the legislature passed a law in which they will be expanded opportunities to vote. The next five items all relate to special education services. The district is experiencing, uh, additional growth in the specialized area. The next slide shows essential items that the district is requesting to continue existing program. The next slide shows some additional investments that we'd like to make in the academic plan. The academic plan is a whole topic under a legislative plan that we instituted about twenty years ago. The total proposed budget for two thousand nineteen twenty is approximately two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which represents four point three seven percent increase. You'll also know on the next line that the proposed tax levy increase for two thousand nineteen twenty is one point nine nine percent. We're able to have the tax levy lower than the budget goal percentage because of, of stating that we will be stating next year. The district is pleased that this will be the sixth consecutive year that they propose zero to one percent tax levy increases. Factoring in the one point nine nine percent proposal for two thousand nineteen puts the district at a six-year average of forty-six percent tax increase. In addition to the budget goal on May twenty-first, you will also have the opportunity to vote on a proposed facilities plan. Superintendent average is key on that topic next.
Ensuring that we have quality facilities to support a robust educational program is essential in increasing student achievement. On May twenty-first, voters will have the opportunity to consider Proposition Two, which is our facilities referendum. This proposal will have you know tactically. Proposition Two would eliminate and expand North Allney Academy to create a permanent third middle school with six hundred and fifty seats. It would also support a five-year facilities plan, which would address eighty-seven projects and eighteen buildings. It's forty-five point six million dollars with no tax levy cap. The middle school project would cost thirty-one point nine million dollars, and the five-year facilities plan will cost thirteen point seven million dollars. Two-thirds of the funding, thirty point six million dollars, would be supported through state building aid. The remaining one-third of fifteen million dollars would be from district savings in the capital reserve fund. It is important to note that Proposition Two would require sixty percent voter approval per state education department regulations. Finally, two board of education seats will be up for election on May twenty-first, and voters are reminded of two new voting locations this year. In closing, we thank you for your time and attention to this area of important information. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, on May twenty-first.
Some students might not be confident in saying that they're speaking to a group of people or writing a perfect essay, but they can express themselves through a painting or a drawing. And it's really important that everyone is able to express themselves the way that it feels best for them.
One thing that we need is to challenge ourselves physically, mentally, and challenge your spirit, and that is what sports does.
I don't want to feel confident, and our programs help us mentor people within our desired fields of programs that help with our careers, career in life, which is extremely beneficial.
When I as a school leader grow, it helps my students more than I grow.
You know, it is creating a safe space that not only educates the students, but also their families. You know, feel part of this family here in all cases.
Community schools seek to reach all of our families and students to provide community and youth development, academic services, and access to social and health programming that will make everyone better.
Music is important to me because it helps me calm down when I'm stressed. I think everyone who has a true need to, they should be able to take the class.
Uh, theater is a whole, um, study of everything, which means they're important, um, concepts to be teaching young kids about, especially, um, sets you go through, uh, such a situation.
As we're coming in these areas, it's about changing the environment for our students so that they feel appreciated, they know what about themselves, and their people, which you have a success.
I think that was important because it gives us a better future at college, and makes me excited to come to school and learn.
So that's about as fast as we can get through the budget. Plus a little human interest.
Absolutely.
And we're happy to ask some questions, or if you want to.
Any questions?
But I've seen you for seven, eight times. I'm sorry.
Don't, you can't, don't.
And I want to commend you and your staff for what I've seen this year that I haven't seen before. I've seen super ten, I've seen you at more than a few seasons, um, and I've seen you come to town twice. So I do appreciate, commend that. And I don't like hard to leave conversation, but I do also want, since we had a real opportunity, the first conversation we had before, well, what can we do as a unit? Not just you, not us, but as a unit. So at the end of the day, it's all about responsibilities. You know, we have to always stare, man, how, and trust, not, uh, anything. We want to not practice, we want to practice, be a part of the program. It's good for us to have this conversation when it's just us, there's no media, there's nobody else looking, and we can be honest and say, what can we do? It's, you know, it's our kids. It's all our kids. It's all our kids. I mean, they fail, or they didn't cover this summer. It's ours. It's not, it's not schools. It's ours as well.
I think that the conversation right now about our real city partners, I think is irresponsible. Um, I mean, Superintendent Adams can say everything she wants to say, but unless you have the Parks Department here to make commitments and you follow the rules, which is also part of the conversation.
I agree.
I mean, I do think, I agree, but this, but this is, I was saying to Joe Coffey, we actually have to plan this out and not just on the fly, and then you can just, you have everyone with questions. And we need to actually plan these things and do it.
Yes.
Um, and I, I mean, I could be wrong, but I just, I don't, I don't feel like we can have that conversation without the city partners here. We can't do that.
And what we can say is that we're a real partner, and we're happy to work in partnership with the city. But she thinks I was really right in saying that, um, this is one of the things, the, the school workers is the council, right? The superintendent is CEO, right? And that is who she is for the school district. And we are the guiding government board, but then everybody on the city side that's here is on the board side and not on the administration side. So those conversations do happen all of the time with city staff, with the PDG and the district staff. Those conversations are happening up in the armed systems, um, and up in our system, we're continuing. And the CEO will be interested in what we're to do.
And I agree with that. I, I agree with that, right? We can't be afraid of having conversations at some point.
Here, I think it's making sure it actually can.
But the commonest that we keep talking, we keep talking about having conversations, but we never did.
What do you mean conversa? I, I couldn't hear. You said having con, about what?
Where we have, this big word sharing, that about finding where we should share our resources.
Well, I think we, I think with Park and Recreation, I think they are having those conversations. And, and, and I think, um, sometimes we forget, like, when they do budget presentations, each department, like, I had to ask them, are you working with them? They go, oh, yeah, we are working with the school district on this, and they're, they're providing us with this, and they're. So those, it's happening. I don't, I don't think we can not say they're not, but I think sometimes people forget to mention it. And you say, are you? And they say, oh, yes, the school district is paying for this, and we're do. So they are happening, and I think that's a bigger discussion, like, for a committee, Park and Recreation Committee, you, then you say, hey, we might wanna bring the school district in to see.
But is it something that, because I do feel like this spans several departments? Is it possible for us to do a meeting focused on, instead of, cause I totally agree, like, it drives me crazy when it should be committee work, but this is something that might be a separate thing, where we have a conversation on this topic, where the relevant people come.
Maybe you could also include the county recreation department.
Yes.
We'd be happy.
They should, like, that's the conversation.
Yes.
That we really need to have, the conversation that hasn't been having, haven't had in fifty years. The superintendent's only been here two years, and, you know, there's, I understand what he's saying, but if you look at our schools, our schools are being utilized up to a certain, uh, uh, moment, you know, in the evening. So to, to do what I'm looking for, you know, we need to figure out how to find a dedicated spot to address the needs of the, the lower borns, you know, the, um, kids. So I agree, this is not the, um, place, but I also have a problem with the same dog and show, uh, pony show that comes from Parks and Recreation, and they, they make this great presentation, but, you know, if you look at the follow-through, there's, there's no follow-through with it. And for me, that's problematic, and that's the reason that we really need to be having, um, the first conversation.
Right. And again, just to remind you, that was the workforce side of, of the house.
No, I'm, I'm.
So, yeah, but, but also, when we talk about, and I'm sorry for interrupting, the, uh, committee. I mean, we want all the council members present, so that might, uh, look like, that might be a committee of the whole. Yeah. Because if we have it in a particular.
Committee of a whole, good point.
Committee, then, um, I think we missed something, so.
Good point, committee of a whole.
I'll have to talk to.
And I, and I, I just wanna say this for my, for me, you know, fi, seeing where our school district was and where it's come from. For me, as an elected official, I am happy and proud that I feel like I have, I have verbiage to talk to people about our school district. Before, we didn't have that verbiage, and I, and I'm telling you, you really should, you, when they send you those emails, you really should open up and read them. It gives you ammunition when people talk about what's going on in the school district. I know, when I was on the council before, I couldn't tell them, like, I, I think we're, we hear all the bad news. We are getting stuff about our school district all the time, where we can say, this is what they're doing, this is what's going on, this is our success. That is huge, and to change that narrative about our schools, our city school district. And I think the, the, the district has done a wonderful job, really saying, we're gonna let you guys know what we're doing. We're gonna let you know where we are, so that way, when the budget comes up, we're not running, like, you know, eight years ago, we're running around, like, why should people vote for the school budget? What, we know, we have the information now. We know why. It's not even like, well, let me figure this out. You have it, and that's why I think when we talk about partnerships and, and things of that nature, I've, I've heard people say, oh, yeah, the school district has worked. Like, when they, what meeting was it, where they were saying, well, the school's being used? That, that's an old argument. They're rebringing, like, yes, they are open. Oh, that's why we can't do that, because we're using that for this. And they're like, oh, okay, but we know that because they're. But we know that because they're telling their story. And so we can't, we, I think we're past those old arguments. The school district's not using the schools long. What I think, where we, where we are, is about showing that our district is communicating with the leaders in this, in this, in the city. They're communicating with the partners in the city on a regular basis. And they're showing that they're trying to make sure the word gets out there. This is what our school district is doing, and this is where we were, and this is where we're going. And that's a drastic change. And I, you know, so that's where I am with it.
Talking about changes, I would also like to comment about the, the change in the graduation rate, because I can remember the years when it was hovering around 50%. So that and a number of schools that are in good standing. I, you know, I'm just really thrilled to see that. And I guess I would ask, what do you attribute the increase to? Can you point to a few different things at all?
Absolutely. Number one, just the, the focus and the target of... We, we have what we use now called a data dashboard. And so this data dashboard has so much information about each individual student. And so at the high school, each teacher has five students that they work with and that they mentor. And they follow them specifically with what they need in order to keep them on track for graduation. And so I would say that's one of the biggest things in knowing at an individual level what students need in order to stay on track for graduation. And then, when a teacher would see those gaps with the students that they're mentoring...
What would be an example?
Attendance might be an issue.
There you go.
And then you look at attendance and you say, well, why have you been out three times this week?
And who, who was saying that to the students?
The teachers.
Which, any, oh, in their class?
Their homeroom teacher or the teacher who's mentoring them, because each teacher has five students. And so they would, they would talk with the student about, you know, what's going on? Why are you absent? And what you find out, there's just a myriad of reasons. It could be, I work at night. It could be that I have to take care of my younger siblings. It could be, we need food in the house. We have students that...
Are these just particular students who are mentees?
No.
Across the board?
It's across the board that teachers have five students. And that's because we don't want to lose track of any of them. So any student who may be doing well, what are you doing that's going well? How can we help you continue to do well?
And how often do they meet with these kids?
Roughly, well, they have homeroom every day. But that interaction at that level might be twice a week or something like that. So, but it's delving down to the individual level. Yes.
Just because I, I'm not saying it doesn't exist. It's not shocking for me to not get information from high and municipal senior. But I haven't heard of this before.
We just started it. We just started it. And so we did start with a target of the students first, and so now it's slowly now.
Yeah.
We have about 23, 2,500 students in each school.
So what, what, whatever you're saying... Are there that many teachers that would require about 400 teachers?
No, because they will double up. You know, that's why I said they have a minimum of five students. And they have at least five students. And there's some, because if some students, again, it's differentiated support. There are some students that will require more support, and there's some that won't. So they're maybe higher or lower case loads, if you will, to delve down. And then we also have support staff, and we also have our counselors. It's not necessarily just a teacher.
They're not working side.
So it's, you know, because students identify with different adult life habits.
That's right.
So it may be a home monitor, it may be the homeschool coordinator that's interacting with the child.
And we have all this, it's not just based on relationships. There's also a data component to it. So we have a really visual, every single child, and look at their behavioral data, their academic data, their attendance data, all in one place, all at the time, in a queryable way, so we can identify kids who might potentially be slipping through the cracks, and we can get them, have them to the right person. And I just want to add on that 68% of our four-year graduation rate, the six-year graduation rate at Allney High is 72%, right? And the state requires us to report that four-year graduation rate. But we all know that some of our children come into the city very late, right? We might get one from Syria who's 14 years old.
Yep.
And we also have kids who've got challenges at home that are not faced by the law or the state. And if they graduate at six years, I think we should celebrate those children. And so 72% at six years, I am very, very happy to see that. And that's also an interesting fact.
Question. Is the high school expansion on track and on budget?
Yes, it is on track and on budget. It is not exactly in time. You may recall last summer felt a lot like this past May.
Yeah.
Monsoon season slowed us down a little bit. We had hoped to be ready, be hoping for this kind of fall with the new edition, and it will not be open until the beginning of the next calendar year. So we are, we did split the semester because of the monsoon season that was last summer. We were doing...
Sure, the veil right in January?
Yes, we'll start moving in our first, our first seven students into the new building. You do have a flyer that talks about our groundbreaking ceremony. We would love to have you there. That starts at 10:30. But we are starting tours at 9:15. And what we'd like to do is just going to get a temperature check, because we would like to do a special V.I.P. viewing, if you will. And we could set up a time for the council to come over, and we can give you a private tour of, of our new new zone.
Do you guys want to see the day that you prefer a long time after work? What's...
It's, you're kind of all over the board here. Some are retired, some are, I mean...
And we can do, we can work out both options. You can always come on Saturday, or we'll also find... Now, you obviously have to eat, because we're not going to disrupt the work. For the tour, we get to do it at a time when I...
So we'll have Ron follow up?
Yeah, yeah, once we get close to where we can do it, we'll communicate.
The groundbreaking is June 1st.
June 1st.
June 1st and the 15th. And that's her face, too, which is the one that's closest to Washington Avenue, so you'll see that.
I think we saw it. That's the day. Mr. Johnson?
So I just want to say, I said this to you prior. I want to say thank you, because good things have been happening at all in our school long. And, you know, for so long, you're supposed to start the negative heat. And you've done a great job of getting what was going good at Allney High out there and the things that you brought, so, you know, I love it. When I see my school district crew, you know, I feel a personal connection, wink, wink. But I'm glad, I'm glad that you made it, you made it easy for me to, you know, promote city, the Allney City Public Schools. And so now they have cards that they can look at, and the information is everywhere. So I just want to say thank you.
Okay, so one last question, and we'll wrap up. Mr. Baller?
And I do want to commend you, you know, 48%, I remember working at 48%.
Mm-hmm.
So that's huge. I think we never get to, well, we never get to 72%. 72 in six years is something we should be proud of. My question is, what can we do with those students who age out? And the last of 21, a lot of our students aged out this year. What can we do so we don't lose, not, not, a lot of the violence that happened last year was, were individuals that were 18 to 32. So what we lose is huge chunk of population, because, you know, they age out of schools. And then going up...
So we have an adult education program, and we do a continuing education. And so those programs, that's what we're able to work with at this time. I will say what I think in terms of education, what we can do. Somehow, we have to manage to get that group of disconnected individuals into apprenticeships so that they can learn different skills, they can maybe learn a trade if they want to go to, make it, make it easier access for them to go to a community college, maybe, so that they can get some of those foundational skills to move forward. There, and I have to speak from an educational standpoint, which is why, Jenny, I agree with you, in that it's a much bigger conversation, because my lane is the education lane.
That's right.
So no matter what you ask me about, I'm going to have an education lens with regard to that. And recognizing what some of our limitations may be because of students that may age out, or whatever the cases may be, I will always have that education lens, and I will be able to work with any individual or any group to say, if this is what you're bringing to the table, how we can complement and work with that. But from an education standpoint, we would have to look at adult education, continuing education, looking at community college enrollment, and seeing what type of barriers may exist for someone so that we could help figure out what are those supports that they may need. It may be childcare, it may be transportation, whatever those types of things may be, so that we can help facilitate getting them on track, a different trajectory for success.
And what you're talking about is really the short-term question about what to do with kids who are aging out right now. The real question, I think, for us to look long-term for the future of our city is what's happening for kids who are eight right now and seven right now? And that's a place where we're investing a tremendous amount of time and energy in making sure that our kids, that little kids, are not going to get to high school and feel that they cannot succeed, and then they go down. So, yes, we have to deal with the kids who are there now, but we are also to, to make sure our kids are in a better position to succeed academically and succeeding in their own life choices by helping get them ready earlier.
Okay, so, thank you for your...
Thank you very much. Have a great night.